I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Tonight, we remain standing for Susan A. Hearn's, a clerk typist from 1989 through 2012, who passed away on August 30th, 2023. And for Merdity Stein, a teacher from 1965 through 1994, who passed away on September 3rd, 2023. And for Ann Nicholson, a teacher from 1964 through 1997, who passed away on September 5th, 2023. Thank you. 4.0 presentations. 4.1, we have our summer school presentation with Jenna Luteri and Neelam Yagalsky.
All right, before I begin my presentation, I just want to give our special thanks to everyone who helps to support our program and make our program so successful. From the Lancaster Board of Education to district administration, especially Mrs. Bowle. She allows us to use William Street School and all of her buildings or all of her classrooms. Our technology mentors, our Nurse Judy and Nurse Tracy, counseling staff, district office secretaries, and custodians and cleaners. So for those of you who don't know, my name is Jenna Luteri. I am the elementary summer school principal. I think this was my fourth year running the program, and I love it. It's a lot of fun every summer, so I'm just going to show you some highlights from our summer this year. So our program continues to grow every single summer. I think this was our largest number of students we've had, 134 students that were registered. That includes our incoming kindergarten through sixth grade students. We have 13 general education teachers and two special education teachers. And our program is based upon project-based learning, which means our students are working on a culminating project throughout the entire program. And on the very last day, they present it to parents, which I'll show you in just a second. So the theme of our program is Olaf's Coolest Summer Ever, because I'm a big Disney nerd. But this is actually our last year using this one as our theme. We're going to be changing it next year, so I'm excited to tell our teachers about our new theme for next summer. Like I said, we are based on project-based learning. We try to incorporate social studies and science throughout our program, but it's a heavy emphasis on math and ELA. We are very lucky to partner with the special education department and have our special ed teachers kind of join us the past two summers, because it really helps our teachers in the co-teaching model. And you can see, we have students that have OTPT, speech, IEPs, 504s, and AIS. And now we're able to reach a larger number of our students than we ever were able to before. So like I mentioned, our theme is Olaf's Coolest Summer Ever. So each grade level picks a different project that they present to parents on the very last day. Kindergarten grows a watermelon for Olaf. First and second grade, they work on their lemonade stand. Third grade, you can see in the pictures here, they worked on their frozen popsicles. And fourth and fifth grade, or fifth and sixth grade work on the ice cream truck. So this is the last day celebration. It's really an awesome time for our students just to present all of their summer work. So on the left, you can see our second graders presenting their lemonade stands to their parents. And on the right-hand side, you can see our sixth graders handing out their ice cream to parents with their ice cream trucks. Another awesome thing we had this summer was our second year of our enrichment classes. These are simply classes that teachers have created from our district and things that they're really passionate about. So they're able to create the courses based on things that they really enjoy. So we had things like exploring countries, math games, video game creation, egg drop challenges, rocket launch. I really liked the rocket launch one. Mr. Canaski, he had the moat company come in and kind of teach our students how the rocket launch works. And so I was able to go out there, actually the back of William Street School, and we watched them kind of set off a bunch of rockets, which was an awesome, awesome thing to see. And now I'm passing it over to Neelam for our middle school program.
I'm Neelam Yagalsky, and I served as the middle school and high school principal this summer, along with Christina Heights, who couldn't be with us today. I'm going to talk very briefly about the middle school, about the high school, and about the police academy as well, really quickly. So just like to remind you, our staff was, most of these folks are Lancaster in-house people, really a special group of people, really committed to the success of the kids. And we really worked very well together as a team. A special shout out to Michelle Lasinski, if you know her, who functioned as the typist, the monitor, the nurse, and basically anything in any one of those programs. So summer school would not run without Michelle. So I'll move on after that. So our middle school program was either voluntary or recommended by their counselors. Actually, the whole program is completely voluntary. And the whole goal of it really was for them to just be better prepared for the years that follow. And they took five courses. They had ELA, they had math, they had social studies in the traditional sense, and then they had phys ed and social emotional learning, kind of that went opposite, back-to-back on alternating days, just much like it would in a regular school day. The goals of the program were really ultimately to want to be better prepared for the next year. And we did that, I think we successfully did that in a lot of different ways, working on their academics, working on their interpersonal skills, and even getting them active and sending them outside from physical education. Some of the positive highlights, you may have noticed that we didn't have a science teacher. So we made a concerted effort to include some STEM activities in the program itself. And we were lucky enough to have three special presentations. One of them was Lindy PLC. Let me show you the picture here. The cryogenic company came in, and they brought in liquid nitrogen, and they grew flowers and blew things up, and actually they used the liquid nitrogen to make ice cream in the place. So it was really fun. The kids had a great time. We also brought the Western York STEM Hub in. And frankly, I don't think I've ever seen the kids so engaged as they were for two hours. They each coded their own card. They built some out of legos, and they had Reese. And it was a really fun day, and it really served to, really served to kind of get the kids to participate in the program and get a little bit more excited about learning. It was nice to take them out of the traditional classroom setting and just kind of let them explore and play around with the things that they had learned during the summer. Thanks to Kim for the picture. And one of our other staff members, Kim Renaud, who was a librarian, who was only with us for one week, saw these presentations from Lindy and Western York STEM Hub, and put together her own presentation on radiation. So everybody sort of invested in the program and really ran with this idea, let's incorporate some STEM in the middle school program. And it really worked well. And I think we've got planted a lot of seeds for next year. So I'm really excited about that. She actually talked about, Kim actually talked about, she brought a Geiger counter and talked about the radiation of vaping. And it was a really nice presentation. Anyways, positive highlights. I think the kids really bonded after six, five weeks together, as much as, you know, middle school kids, you know, middle school kids are, they're a little, they're a little wild by the end. I'd say much more family-like than when we started. And I would say 100% of the kids are definitely better prepared for the upcoming school year than they were when they walked in the door at the beginning of July. So moving on, I'm going to throw this in after-school Russian program. It's really middle school to high school. We only had two classes. One of them was Mr. Preys' weight training, and the other one was Ms. McTighe's exploring self-ability community. I just wanted to talk about this briefly, because these are all kids who were not enrolled in the summer school program. They voluntarily came here at 12:30 and spent an hour and a half with these two teachers, working on physical and mental wellbeing. So it's a really nice program. And none of these programs lost kids. It seems like they started, and there's more where kids started to show up and register. So it was definitely a real trial last night. I'm going over my time. I'm going to be talking next year. The high school program, pretty much the same staff, and again, super vested in the success of the kids. I think we're really lucky to have this group of teachers and nurses and monitors to work together. We, our goals here were to provide credits, right, to provide credit opportunities for kids who either passed failed classes, or audited classes, or needed the exam. And that's inherently what we did. And we also were able to, with the help of Danielle Len, provide them a lot of emotional support and all ed and physical education, just to kind of help the whole process along. And we had 78 students register for the program. 62 took classes, the others were just there for the exams. They took any one of these or many of these classes. And I think for the first time ever, we actually added a fifth period, and we were able to get students who didn't make it in phys ed, which is usually kind of a schedule killer, they left here. They stayed an extra hour to earn that phys ed credit. And our phys ed teacher was willing to pluck some time in that way, too. So it worked out really well for many of these students. The police academy, we didn't house that at our site, but it was housed, I think, here. And Mr. Trepler took care of that. And it was a two-week program, where I think four of our students earned credit for forensics. And you can see all the different things that were done as well. Mrs. Len still works for us. I'm sorry. Okay, so the numbers. Of the 66 students that enrolled, 102 class registrations, all, 100 of them earned credit. So all but two were successful in recovering the credits. 21 students made it on the Regents exams, and that does include the special ed, the special appeal. And I just wanted to make note of all of our lab students that were in there. Every lab student who made it through our five-week program earned credit. And we only had two that dropped. So I think overall, that speaks to how committed the staff was and how the program just sort of worked. And thank you to Board of Ed and all the people that you see listening here. Special thanks to Mr. Craseman, who I think I texted probably 17 times a day, and Mrs. Ziegler, who was setting up Eastwood Farming while she was on vacation, and everyone there, the staff at the middle school, the office staff, the custodial staff were phenomenal. We felt very welcome there. And we were able to do a lot of different things. So it was a really great summer for us. Any questions?
I'm going to try to work sideways also. Hi, I'm Janine Suter, and this is Matt Hein. We are high school special education teachers. Oh, sorry. Yep.
So this is 4.2, the summer work-study program. And I'll throw it over to you, Janine and Matt.
Okay, thank you. So Matt and I had our first year experience working with some of the functional students from Lancaster High School and Clarence High School at our work-based learning program.
At this time, I'd like to briefly acknowledge the staff members who made this program possible. We have Janine, myself, and then we had two fantastic aides who could not be here today, June and Tom. We are also joined by our speech and language mythologist, Anne Marie Charvet. And I'd like to think, give special thanks to John and Erin, who are our director and assistant director of special education, as well as their counterpart from Clarence Central, where four of our students did come from each day, as well as for Stephanie Lackey, the principal of Lancaster Middle School, who housed our program. And also to the Salvatore family, who graciously opened up their businesses to allow us to bring our students to practice and work on their job writing skills.
Okay. So the goal of our program is pretty diverse. We spent two days in the classroom. When we were in the classroom, we worked on preserving some of the skills that the students have learned throughout the school year, including math, reading, and writing. Two other days, we were at the Salvatore family locations, one day at the Delvin, and one day at the Garden Place. And then on Fridays, we took a community outing field trip once a week. And that was, gave us an opportunity to get out there and experience different programs and different opportunities that our community has to offer. We had 11 students. Seven were our Lancaster students, and four were from Clarence. And one of our primary goals was flexibility. So often, we came in, we were ready to go, or if we went to the Delvin or the Garden Place, we had to be ready to be flexible and work with the staff at both locations. And then, of course, on field trips, you know, some days it was 90, some days it was raining. So of course, that was kind of our theme every day with a lot of our students, is being flexible and understanding. So I think I covered everything there. Okay.
As we previously mentioned, we were able to develop a partnership with the Salvatore families at their two hotels, the Delvin and Garden Place Hotel. Tasks at the Delvin would include providing and maintaining a welcome environment for the guests who attended, or who stayed at the hotel each night. We worked there dusting the lobby, vacuuming common areas of the hotel, sanitizing the weight room, and cleaning the glass surface, glass and other surfaces throughout the hotel. When we were at the Garden Place on Thursdays, we really focused on all aspects of laundry, something that we might think of being as more trivial tasks. But for our students, this was something that really provided them with the opportunity to practice things at work, as well as for their daily living skills as well. We also had worked with the cleaning staff to strip hotel beds, collect linens, separate, wash, fold, and restock the linens for both hotel locations, and the vacuuming common areas. You do have a picture on the top right of some of our students when they were working with us. And the tasks of this program, first program of this nature, are designed for students with more exceptional needs, who thrive in an environment where there's going to be a lot of repetitive tasks, for them to master the skill that we are trying to teach at that time.
Okay. So like I said previously, on Fridays, we took some field trips. And Matt, if you can bring those up, because I forget some of the order. So we went to the Aurora Movie Theater, and we were taken care of by getting the whole theater to ourselves. And we enjoyed a movie, along with some treats. They had heated seats now, it was pretty amazing, if anybody needs a little outing. Beautiful location. The Lions Club presented us with an opportunity to attend a picnic, which involved many of the local, like Bosse's programs. So that was wonderful. We got to ride a pony, take a boat ride, do some karaoke. We went to the Aquarium of Niagara. We went to Reinstein Woods. Destroyer Park Golf, if anybody's looking for something really fun and new to do. This is in Akron, and it's a combination of like putt-putt and golf and croquet. So give it a try. It was super fun. Our kids did great. They had a wonderful experience. It is 18 holes. I think we only played nine. But it's something fun to do. After I took this field trip, I took my son, who's 15, and his friends. It was a great time. We went to the Buffalo Zoo as our last field trip.
In addition, we do have a couple things that we did celebrate as a result of this program here this summer. First and foremost, one thing that we are very proud of is one of our students who was enrolled in the program, actually went through the entire application process, and was hired by the Salvatore family to join their team of workers at the Garden Place Hotel. We did have two students with perfect attendance, and we had friendships develop across school districts. With students coming from Clarence and Lancaster, these groups would not regularly interact, but we did have some groups who did make some very strong friendships in our six weeks. We, at the end of the year, our students hosted a picnic for our program staff as kind of a thank you, and to be able to develop the social skills that our students do need to focus on as well. And finally, we were able to incorporate fun, hands-on activities for our students in order to have more meaningful lessons, as opposed to sitting and just listening to us. So it was very nice to be able to see those.
All right. So final thank you. Matt and I both enjoyed our experience. And I know we can speak for June and Tom, too, who also enjoyed their experience. June and Tom had also worked last year in the program, so it was very helpful to help Matt and I navigate through this new experience. So thank you, Board of Education, Dr. Valerli, John and Erin. We were well taken care of at the middle school. We actually got housed in one of their fax rooms. It was beautiful. We were able to cook in there. We were all spread out. We were able to host our end-of-the-year picnic. So the custodial staff took care of us, and of course, again, the Salvatore's family for providing us with those opportunities twice a week. Thank you, everybody.
All right, before we move on to the next presentation, I just want to highlight how important these programs are. We boast about our graduation rate here in Lancaster, but without these programs, that wouldn't happen. So thank you to all the teachers, the administrators, the staff who worked on summer school and this work-study program, because without those, you know, we wouldn't be where we are today. So thank you again. And now we're going to move on to 4.3, tenure certificate, certificate presentation. Dr. Marchelli, I'll pass it over to you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about three different elementary teachers that are working here with us. And before I highlight them individually, I want to point out that they all started in 2019. The fall of 2019 led to March of 2020. And in March of 2020 and going forward, we saw hundreds, if not thousands, of teachers leave the field. And the women here tonight that I'm talking about, not even, not just stayed, but they persevered, and they took on some incredible challenges, and as did the rest of the people that were, that were talking about this evening. But I just think it's something to recognize, that they started their career at a time that was so difficult and troublesome for everyone, but stayed in this as we turned education on its head, and kept up with it, and became just fabulous teachers that do so much for our students. So the first is Jenna Luteri, who you've already met tonight. She's an exemplary teacher, and she's been working at Como Park as a kindergarten teacher. Kindergarten teachers in and of themselves amaze me. If you've ever spent any time in a kindergarten room, you know that that's a tough job. But you walk into her classroom, and her children are enjoying themselves, and they're learning, and they're self-sufficient, and they're on task. And again, that is no small feat with five-year-olds. A lot of us have been parents to five-year-olds, and you know it's hard to do when you just have one. If you try it with 20, that's a thing. And as I mentioned, she started her first year during the pandemic. And then when we came back in the fall of 2020, Jenna willingly took on the task of being the fully remote kindergarten teacher. Now, I've just talked about how difficult it can be to teach kindergarten. Now try doing it over a screen to 20-some kindergartners. So... So, but she used those same classroom abilities that she has live with her students, and she did that over the computer. She also did that, while she was doing that, she also became an integral part of our STEAM committee. And as you know, she's our elementary summer school principal. She runs that program with great enthusiasm and efficiency. I never have to worry about it. She's just fabulous. And she does everything from interviewing faculty, to overseeing projects, data collection, and more. I'm very thankful that she's here, and it's a pleasure to see her receive tenure. And I am thrilled that she is part of the Lancaster team. So congratulations. So next is Jess Ruber. And I will never forget meeting Jessica Ruber. She was part of the first group of teachers that Mr. Craseman and I interviewed when we started doing campus interviews. She has both elementary and secondary certification. And Andy and I were sitting together and interviewing her. And as she was interviewing, I kept thinking to myself, I can't believe this girl is this good, coming straight out of college. So Andy and I are interviewing her, and as soon as she walked out, Andy looked at me and he goes, I'll fight you for her. I won that fight, and I'm very happy that I won that fight. Since then, she's been a valued member of our fourth grade team at William Street. She's a talented teacher, and her students are better for being in her class. Her students love her, and the parents appreciate her open communication. She has worked diligently on our ELA committee since day one, and has been an important part of the team that piloted our new program that we have at William Street. And since bringing on that program, she has worked with the team to make sure that it's meeting all of the needs of our students, and making those little Lancaster tweaks that we like to make. Again, I'm so glad that Andy and I made that trip to her college campus, and I'm so glad I won and got her to be a part of the elementary faculty. So congratulations.
You're welcome.
Next is Angela Stazak, and she works with our students at Sholley, who struggle with reading. And she's one of our literacy specialists. As you can imagine, if you are a young person, and your friends are figuring out how to read, and you're struggling, that can be disheartening. But Angela brings those children into her classroom, and she puts the spark back into them. Every time I've observed her, the lesson is exciting and engaging. There was one lesson that really sticks in my mind, that again, was remote, because here's one of these brand-new teachers who took on remote education. She was working with a young man, and at first, he was very engaged. But she knew him so well, even though they hadn't met in person, that when he started to slip a little bit, she's like, you know what? I think you need that toy over there to help you get focused. And didn't that little guy go get it and play with it for a minute? And then she was able to bring him right back. It can be difficult to manage students in the classroom. To have that much knowledge and understanding of what your students need over a computer screen is exceptional. She also volunteers to make Sholley a better place. She's an active member of the building planning team. She also is one of the first people that our students see in the morning. She works safety and security most mornings. And that means she has a lot to attend to. But even as she's working to make sure that our students are coming into the building safely, every one of those students gets greeted with a smile, and that helps to set the tone for their day. I'm thrilled that Angela is receiving tenure and will continue to help create a strong foundation for our students here in Lancaster.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Craseman. I'm the director of secondary education. And tonight, I have the opportunity to recognize truly some fabulous educators who have earned their tenure in their respective disciplines over the last couple of years. So I'd like to take this opportunity to personally congratulate all of them before I call them up, and then everyone else who is receiving tenure this evening. The first person I'm going to mention is Danielle Sloan. Unfortunately, Danielle couldn't be with us tonight. Danielle is a library media specialist who works at Lancaster High School alongside Kathy Hanners, and has done a great job in working alongside Mrs. Hanners over the course of the past four years. And I will share my words with her when I see her. But congratulations to Danielle. The first person I would like to recognize tonight is Sarah Checo. Sarah, come on forward. How are you? You can stay right there. Mrs. Checo is truly a remarkable young teacher, who has been working in our alternative program. She's worked in the high school. Now she's working at the middle school. So she's been all over the gamut over the course of the past four years. She shares her passion and enthusiasm for math with the students of Lancaster, and has proven to be a tremendous asset to not only the math program, but to the community as a whole. As I've gotten to know Sarah, she demonstrates incredible qualities that really do make her a phenomenal educator. She's a team player. She's a leader. And she puts students as her primary focus. She challenges students through various activities and cooperative structures in her classroom. She makes math fun. In fact, I can say, in all of my years as an educator, I've never walked into a math class and not seen math taught until I went to Sarah's room. Now, let me explain this. When Sarah was working in the alternative program, she did a lesson with her alternative students around analysis of sales and percentages, and how to find the best deal, and not doing sine squared theta plus cosine squared theta equals one. You taught me that. That was in Algebra II. But it was the way that she had engaged with her students to do real-life practical applications of math with our alternative program, was something that I saw, and something that just has stuck with me, even all of these years later, as I was putting this speech together. In addition to these characteristics, she's... In addition to these characteristics, she's also a very reflective practitioner who was always looking to find ways to better herself. In an observation that I conducted with Sarah last year, she experimented with a new classroom strategy that, well, didn't go exactly as planned. But she recognized it immediately. And during our discussion after the lesson, she had already reflected and strategized on how she can teach that lesson and use that strategy more effectively in future lessons. This is a characteristic of what I'm going to say is an all-star educator. And I'm very thankful that Sarah is part of our team in Lancaster. Thank you, Sarah, for all you do for our kids.[638.54][638.54](APPLAUSE). Caitlin, come on down. Caitlin Kostek is what I like to call a charismatic individual who has also worked in our alternative program, in the high school, and now also at the middle school. So, her and Sarah have a lot in common and they're also like the best of friends. She shares her passion and enthusiasm for biology and the physical sciences with the students here in Lancaster. Like Mrs. Checo, she is a tremendous asset to the community and she's a tremendous asset to the middle school science department. As I've gotten to know Caitlin, I could see that she has a passion for her kids. Ms. Kostek truly cares about each student that steps into her classroom on a daily basis. Even students who no longer have it will stop by and say hello. When she was teaching living environment at the high school and she was no longer up in, up in LAP or she was split with LAP, the LAP students would come down and come over and say hello. It truly shows the level of relationship that she's built with her students over the years. Ms. Kostek believes in the power of relationships and exercises that with her students on a consistent basis. In addition to her relationship skills, she also works very hard to find ways to engage students with real-life experiences and scenarios that bring concepts to life. I can think in every one of my observations with Caitlin, kids were doing something. They're creating graphs. They're playing with manipulatives and trying to work out solutions to different scientific theories or understanding Newton's Law of Motion. Newton's Law of Motion? Yes. Okay. Good. I got that one right. But to understand these different concepts and to do it in a way that is kinesthetic so that students can understand what these things mean in real life. She provides real-life scenarios for students and they have to work collaboratively to come up with solutions to real-life problems that exist outside of the classroom. She challenges her students to apply the information learned to these concepts and demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. I'm very thankful that Mrs. Kostek is part of our team here in Lancaster and I also look forward to working with her for many more years to come. Mrs. Giordano is an enthusiastic educator who's been working with the students in the Lancaster Music Department for the past four years. In that time, she's taught general music at Hillview as well as conducted award-winning bands at William Street and now currently at Lancaster Middle School. Like our previous recipients, Mrs. Giordano is also a tremendous asset to the community and to the Lancaster Music Program. Seeing Mrs. Giordano in action while conducting rehearsal is truly an incredible experience. Picture this. You have 60 middle school students in a room with instruments that generate all kinds of fun, different sounds. But because she provides such an incredible routine and structure for students to rehearse efficiently that enable her students to perform at a high level on a consistent basis, those kids are with her all of the time. But I also think she might use like Jedi mind tricks on some of these kids. It's candy. All right. So, that's the trick apparently. It's candy. But as students are warming up and they're tuning their instruments and they're getting ready to start rehearsal, Mrs. Giordano will literally go up to the front of the room and just do this. And all 60 kids go silent. And everything stops and then they're ready to roll. And again, that's 60 middle school students. Amazing. That shows to me the incredible amount of respect that her students have for her. They want to learn and to grow in each rehearsal and put on a high-level performance at an upcoming concert. Teaching music, especially instruments, can be a challenge and sometimes students may want to quit or jump ship. Mrs. Giordano is a cheerleader and is constantly encouraging and reinforcing her students to keep with it. She helps teach grit and perseverance through their love for music. Finally, Ariana is the first teacher that I can speak about giving tenure to, not only as an administrator, but as a parent. She has been and continues to be an inspiration for all three of my kids. They look forward to going to rehearsals, lessons, or even just talking or sharing a story with Mrs. G. My kids love playing music and playing their instruments and I truly believe that would not be the case today without her guidance and support. And for that, I am truly grateful. Thank you, Mrs. Giordano, for all you've done, not just for my kids, but for all the kids in the Lancaster community. You know, our mantra here in Lancaster is to always hire the best. And I think all of the candidates here tonight that we're bestowing tenure upon truly are a symbol of what it means to hire the best. You guys are absolutely awesome. Mr.
Good evening, folks. Come on up, Alexis. So, it is, I want to welcome everybody here tonight for just, I think, in the history of a teacher or their career, the tenure, teacher's earning tenure and it being granted by the Board of Education is just a huge accomplishment. It's a lot of work. I echo the sentiments that Mr. Krasman and Mrs. Marchioli said. I mean, talk about a time to either get started in education, right? Or even to transfer if you had some experience and come to Lancaster newly when, when the COVID experience hit us. But people that have a lot of grit and determination like Alexis and love kids and are passionate about teaching did well, as you can see here tonight. And Alexis is certainly one of those, one of those teachers. Alexis is a special educator, an exceptional educator. She works at the middle school, teaching special classes in social studies and has been, has been a godson for our children. I've been fortunate to come in and see Alexis teach. I love that part of my job. And I've also worked with her a lot at the Committee on Special Education Meetings where we devise and implement plans for students for their education plan. She's always organized. She's professional. And especially with regards to her lessons, she is wonderfully enthusiastic and her lessons are particularly good at engaging students. So, I'll give you an example. I know, for example, when Alexis teaches about something like immigration or something, a larger social studies concept, like something like government structures where it can be somewhat abstract, right? Kind of hard to relate to. She goes above and beyond to make that meaningful to kids. You know, that's what I'm talking about, right? Or some of them? Yeah. So, oftentimes, to teach these and to get children to really understand the concept and relate to it, she often devises her lessons so that the students role-play or simulate such an experience. So, even in more detail, in particular, when studying, for example, immigration, the students role-play as if they're going through Ellis Island in New York City, as if they were emigrating through Ellis Island and the role-plays and the kids are really, really into it. They, they take it on and I think Alexis really challenges them to think and take a different perspective or a different viewpoint and really gets them to understand the process and from different perspectives and groups of people, for example, that came to our country. So, I know her students love this approach. I've also seen her teach reinforcement classes, which she does an excellent job of getting kids ready, practicing their executive functioning skills, their organizational skills, getting ready for tests, helping them with projects and homework. And just that's, it's just a sign of a well-rounded teacher in terms of being able to support kids that way, but also content-wise and social studies to make them really like the subject and to excel. So, and she always does this with just, it's like a positive energy. I don't want to get too zen here today, although Mr. Krasman did bring up Jedi mind tricks, so thank you. But she, she's just got that positive attitude, right? Kids know that. They sense that. They feed off of it and they respond to it. So, that is very important, especially if children do struggle a little bit to learn. It's important to have that positive attitude and enthusiasm. And that is certainly Alexis. She just, that, that special X-factor, I sometimes call it, that she has that makes kids want to learn is really, really important and she definitely has that. And it, it gets transferred over to our kids because they like to learn. And also, I, I'm fond of the middle school experiences. Somebody else already brought up, she, she works with the seventh and eighth graders and you got to have a special place in your heart, I think, for middle school students. That's, that's where I taught for a long time, too. So, moreover, Alex advocates for her students, teaches them to speak up for themselves, in other words. But she also teaches them how to do that for themselves, which is certainly a valuable skill as kids go through school and also into life. And then, in terms of her commitment to the district and some other things outside the class, I understand she's quite a lacrosse coach. You, you work with Julie, right? Mrs. Bucciari up at the high school. So, I know that's a passion of hers and she does, it takes a great interest in her team and her, and the students that she coaches and their athletic and social development. So, I could go on and on, which I've been known to do, but for these and many more
All right. Thank you so much. You know, this is one of those moments in your life, you know, as an educator, when you, when you earn tenure, it's a, it's a big deal, right? And like Andy said, you know, we hire the best and we set out, that's our, our goal. That's our motto, is we hire the best. So, you know, if you receive tenure in Lancaster, you're, you're the best, right? So, again, congratulations to all of you. All right. Moving on to 5.0 correspondence, we have two emails on record. 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, can I have a motion for the regular session on August 28th, 2023?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Before we go on, I just want to mention that Mr. Talarico and Mr. Jackson are excused from this evening's meeting. 7.0 are items from staff organizations. Do we have anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. Just very quickly, the LCTA would like to take a moment, welcome our students back as well as to thank, you know, our members as well as the staff for a smooth opening to the new school year. And lastly, we would just like to congratulate our newly-tenured teachers who are honored here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 8.0, board reports. Do any members have anything to report?
I did. So, as I talked about when I was running, my son officially started kindergarten this year. So, it's, it was, it was amazing. My son was more excited than my wife was, so there was that. So, but he loves it. Unfortunately, he's home from, he's already caught a cold, so he's home from school today. But, but yeah, he's, he's so excited and, you know, it was a very good process. He came home, was very happy and, you know, I'm just extremely grateful that he got to go and my wife is slowly handling it. So, but I just want to talk about how exciting that was for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
I just wanted to remind the community that Saturday, September 30th, is the 20th Annual Ravelry, the Lancaster Marching Legends Home Show. So, if you're looking for something fun to do with the whole family, they put on a heck of a show. So, come on out.
Thank you, Mrs.
This Saturday, as a board, we were able to tour the mobile classroom experience units, is that what they're, mobile classroom experience? The MCEs at Como Park and to see the new classrooms at Hillview. And I just think they're phenomenal. I'm really excited. Every year, there's so many things happening across the district with all of the capital improvements that we've done over the past decade or more and more to come. So, it was really exciting to see all of that and see how it's just been improving over the district over many, many years. Like, I told everyone I went to Como Park as a child and it looks very different than when I went there from under a hard hat.
Thank you, Mrs. All right. On to 9.0, the superintendent's administrative report.
Couple of things, Mr. Sage. Just a reminder that on September 7th, the Board of Education invited the community to interact with its potential next capital project. About 85 to 100 total people showed up and we believe that it went very well. We got a lot of positive feedback and a lot of meaningful feedback, replete with ideas that many of us felt were beneficial to the process. So, on behalf of the Board of Education and all of us here at the district, thank you to all those people who came out last week, Thursday. We taped the presentation for people who were not able to come and so they'll be able to view it and learn how the project's put together, how state aid is granted, all those important things. Kim Grimal posted that video the next day on our website and it's had over 300 views to date. This past Saturday, the Board of Education, like Mrs. Fescher said, had their annual retreat for the entire Saturday. And the Board was able to interact with the community's comments, feedback, ideas, suggestions, et cetera. And we'll continue moving the project as well as the process forward and there'll be more to come in the coming months on that topic. As far as, this is the first board meeting since school started, so it was really a good opening. With all, all that we take on here and were forced to take on, it was really been a great start of the school year. I was really happy with how things have gone so far and hope we'll keep, hopefully we'll keep them rolling. So, opening days in schools, our students, teachers, and staff returned with enthusiasm and energy that's second to none. The opening days of the new school year are always exciting and usually a little hot and they were again this year in the 90s. But this, but once again, the hallways were buzzing and the sound of laughter and learning and our classrooms were brimming, brimming with inquisitive minds eager to conquer new challenges. As far as transportation, we got everyone to and from school safely, starting with a really good day on opening day and continued in improving the timeliness of the buses each and every day. The busing changes associated with Court Street and Como Park start times went extremely well. I'd like to thank Judy
and resources. Does anyone else have any old business to discuss? All right, on to new business, 11.0. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.1.2, can I have a motion on the tenure recommendation?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? For the record, those are tenure recommendations that will then be at the next meeting. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.3, can I have a motion on the field trip approval for Quebec City in Canada?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.0, business and financial items. 11.1, can I have a motion on the financial items?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion on the policy adoption 3410 Code of Conduct?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.3, can I have a motion on the policy adoption 8110 Curriculum Development, Resources, and Evaluation?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.4 through 12.8 are policy readings. Policy second reading 12.4, 3420, nondiscrimination and anti-harassment in the district. These are for information only, that's our second policy reading. 12.5 is a second policy reading of 6121, sexual harassment in the workplace. 12.6 is policy first reading 5140, administration of the budget. 12.7 is policy first reading 3430, culture, climate, and inclusivity in the district. 12.8 is policy first reading 7410, extracurricular activities. Those will be voted on at a subsequent meeting. 12.9, policy deletion 3430, uniform violent and disruptive incident reporting system. Can I have a motion?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the contract with SHC Services, Inc., DBA Supplemental Healthcare?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on the contract with Summit, the Summit Center?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.12, can I have a motion on the research foundation of the State University of New York?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the contract with Beth Farrar?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the contract with Erie One Bosse's?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion on the budget amendment for bus purchase?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Did I miss 12.15? 12.15, okay. 12.15, can I have a motion on surplus equipment?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the donation acceptance?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on the contract with Summit, the Summit Center?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the contract with Summit, the Summit Center?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 1212, a contract with the Research Foundation of the State University of New York?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the contract with Beth Farrar?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the contract with Erie One Bosse's?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion on the budget amendment for bus purchase?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Did I miss 12.15? 12.15, okay. 12.15, can I have a motion on surplus equipment?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Back to 12.17, can I have a motion on the donation acceptance?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 13.0 is our public hearing. We don't have anyone signed up to speak this evening. And 14.0 is our adjournment. Before we adjourn, just to note the next meeting, it's October 10th, 2023. It's a regular session, 7:00 p.m. right here in the William Street School. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Summled.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out.